Educating, informing, serving. TV, keeping government honest.
So let's call to order 6:31 PM. And adjustments to the agenda, we do have one because the WNESU budget is ready for approval. So we will add that with the budget update of 6B. And 6A, RHR Smith, we're going to let them go before superintendent's report. So they'll be right after we approve that. You have anything? You have another one?
Well, I thought I had raised the possibility of talking about the directive related to COVID protocols. And I thought it was going to be added to the.
Well, we were waiting. Secretary French had another press conference this afternoon. And kind of waiting for them to send out whatever they're going to send in its final form. Do you want to? Have discussion on it?
I don't know that we need to take action, but I do have concerns from the community.
Do you want to share Ms. Pollak comment or do you want to add it to the agenda? It is your choice.
I think my concern, the reason I'm asking the agenda was that as I had initially read, the procedures were and given the imminence of that. But I do think it warrants being on the.
Do we know the changes?
Yeah.
Well, yeah.
As of today, what they, you know, today's changes.
And Andy put in his superintendent's report, some discussion with. He could probably update us during, during his report. But I mean, he's put that out to all families. So all the families are aware. But the, like you said, the Secretary French's report today, kind of. Kind of. It made me feel better.
I think some people might not have seen that.
I didn't have a chance to see it, to be honest.
So while 6B is open.
I don't think it'd be a bad idea because of there are impacts on things like tests to stay. That we, that the broader community ought to be aware of because it is controversial. And people may have some views on it.
So. Now it's own item. Which I guess, well, the budgets presentation, budget vote is going to be its own item. And 6B, I guess the COVID pandemic at this point is old business. So we will put that there.
Okay, thanks.
And I don't know what number to give. Seven and a half will be the budget. Um, public comment.
Oh, please don't do that. Also add the policy committee net. So I got to just quickly just do a one minute.
That will be 5B, policy committee report. Yeah.
They may not know she is live.
I don't.
Live, Deb.
They can mute everybody.
Needs to mute.
Listen, folks, I can't mute. But I'm just like.
Muted you, Deb. But we didn't.
They said you muted us.
Yeah, that's weird. All right, everyone seems to be muted, so.
So wave if you have something. Um, policy committee will be 5B. Is that it? All right, communication and public comments. Anyone out there? No hands? So no hands? Okay. Um. Can we quickly review in a quarter of minutes? If somebody has that ready to go.
I will thank you. I hope that we accept the minutes as good.
For December 8th? Did we have the one?
December 8th, this is the one in there.
December 8th is the one that's on there.
We'll do December 8th and if somebody could check that we did November and not.
We haven't, but since it's not on here.
Right, if somebody can check and we get that on the next one.
Um, I have correction.
Okay.
Um, I would like it added under discussion. That Stacy, Stacy said she was not sure of the numbers that were, that she gave, was giving. Reason I'm asking that that also be included because she said that was because those numbers are not what she gave to the committee. They're different from what we had at the committee and it says here that those were at the budget. From the numbers that we've got, the numbers at the committee meeting, which can't be in here because she did say incorrect numbers there. A two case managers and 52 pairs and one clinician at the budget meeting. So it just noting that she did say she wasn't sure of those numbers when she did it would be helpful.
We will make that correction. Are we ready to vote on the minutes as corrected? Anyone? Okay. So. I don't know. Jack, you're not voting today. Deb Wright?
Hi, and apologize for the mess up. There's something going on with my computer. I had to get out and come back in. Thanks.
Oh, pardon. Voting, hold on.
Hi, Jack.
What, what just happened? Why am I not voting?
Reason I thought you were alternate vote.
No, no, I'm, uh, since we went to, uh, since we, Harold's no longer a voting member of the W N U E S D board. I am.
Okay, sorry about that. Jack, how do you vote?
I'll vote, I'll vote for.
Brenda.
Hi.
Well, Jigs McCollum.
Hi.
Jigs is an alternate for Megan and Jason do not look.
Jason Terry's not coming tonight. I already spoke.
Not Jason Terry, Jason Benson.
Jason Benson, sorry. Jason Terry, though, is also not coming tonight.
And I don't see that again either, so.
Okay, and let's see, we got Brenda. Charlie Hatterson.
I vote yes.
Uh, minutes are not budget, sorry.
Oh, okay, I don't vote then.
Okay, Molly.
Yes.
Cheryl. It's not budget. Molly, you.
High school.
Yes.
And Brenda's high school as well.
Yes, but she's not out there by the looks.
She was, yeah. Okay, Lynn, you can vote.
Yes.
And Priscilla.
Yes.
And I am the, I'm going to put my name there. I vote yes. Okay. At motion passes, did I skip somebody?
She got Brenda.
I did get Brenda, yes. Okay, sorry about that. Next up, we are going to hear from RHR Smith on the audit updates.
Hello, everyone. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Oh, my video went away. Do you, can you see me and hear me? That's the question.
Yeah.
Okay, great. So my name's Brittany and I'm an audit manager and the director of support services for RHR Smith. I'm joined tonight by Miranda McDonald, an audit manager at RHR Smith. And Ron Smith is also here. He's the principal at RHR Smith. Miranda and Ron, do you want to just say hi so everyone knows who you are?
Hello.
Hey, folks. Hope everybody's well.
Okay, so we wanted to come tonight and give you an update about where we are in the audit process, where things are. And kind of give you a history of how we came to be where we are. So I want to start by bringing you back to the end of the FY20 audit. And at the end of the FY20 audit, we had raised some concerns in our management letter about things like general ledger reconciliation, assessment reconciliation, a general lack of controls and documentation over cash receipts and cash disbursements. And at the time, management responded that there were going to be procedures implemented to help overcome these items and improve moving forward. And management responded in writing to those items. And since that time, the state of the books and the internal controls have regressed significantly. Uh, and we discovered that, you know, when we, when we came to start looking at FY21, uh, things seem to have declined quite a bit, uh, just in terms of oversight and control. So we started to, you know, raise some concerns, talk with management. We noted concerns with procurement. We have, you know, things that we're still looking into such as concerns with how compensation was decided and delivered, some inconsistencies with policies and procedures. We're still noting that things like general ledger reconciliations and assessments were not completed. Adjustments were not posted and just a general lack of oversight. So, uh, when we sort of began to realize and dig in and see the extent of what we were dealing with, we issued an update letter on December 10th, which I know you all saw, where we started to talk about some of the things we were seeing. So material misstatements and liabilities and problems with health insurance expense. Uh, the assessments, the revenue for the assessments being incorrect on the books, problems with expense distribution. And so since that time, we've been working with Andy and the other staff at the SU office to correct these items. So the report that you have tonight already includes the proposed adjustments for these items. So we've worked through these items. We've proposed adjustments for these items. And the corrections for these items are already reflected in the report that you have. So Andy, does the board have the, the report that we sent?
Did not provide it because it was still in draft form. So I wasn't sure if that was going to come out of draft form, but I can provide it right now.
I think that would, it would be helpful for folks to see it. Um, I also can share my screen if you think that that would be helpful if I have permission to do that. Do you have any, or do you want to email around to the board and?
Yeah, but I'll also give permission to, uh, to share.
Okay.
You should have permission at this point.
Okay. So this is a draft, this is in draft form. I'm just gonna see if I can figure out my share here. Okay. Um, can I, is my screen?
Yeah, it's, yeah, there you go.
Okay, okay. So this is a, what we call a short report. So it's a shortened version of what a final audit would look like. And what we've done in this report is pull out some of the key financial statements. And we have not included the, you know, the notes in the back that really take up the bulk of the report. So, uh, if we scroll down here, this is called Statement C. It's your balance sheet of governmental funds. And it's usually the focal point of the audit for most boards and administrations because it tells you what your projected fund balance is. So this is your major, these are your major funds. This is your general fund. There are certain criteria for something to be considered a major fund. So these 1, 2, 3, 4 are considered major based on their size. And then all the other funds are grouped into this other governmental funds. In the full report, there is a breakdown of what else is included in there. So if we scroll down to your general fund, what we're projecting for the SU is an unassigned fund balance, I'm sorry, an assigned fund balance of about 1.1 million. And we're listing that as assigned because typically the lion's share of that would go back to the districts. And that is a, a large number. You probably have some, some sticker shock there. If we scroll down to, this is your revenues and expenditures, but here's your budget to actual. Um, you can see that there's a number of reasons why, uh, why, why we're seeing this fund balance. So it's a combination of suspected some inaccuracies in budgeting as well as seeing some additional revenue in the areas of transportation. You can see that right here. Um, you can see some other miscellaneous revenue down here that wasn't included in the budget. And then some underspending uh, in your, in your expenditures. And that's again, related to a combination of probably some mistakes in budgeting as well as having access to grant funds and being able to move some things around and not spending as much because, you know, we're, we were sort of in and out and partially remote. So a lot of districts are seeing, um, and SUs are seeing fund balances that they may not expect in a normal year. Um, but it's certainly compounded by some of the other issues that we talked about. So in terms of, I'm going to stop sharing for a second. In terms of what this looks like for the districts, um, if this were to be returned to the districts, there would be about 500,000 each for BFUHS and Rockingham and then about 135,000 for the Union Elementary. So that's sort of the state of where we are. We're continuing to, uh, work through anything that we're finding in the SU. We're, we're feeling like, you know, we felt comfortable enough with this to even provide a draft. Uh, we've now moved on to looking at the districts to see what's going on there. We're finding many of the same problems there, inaccuracies and health insurance and a real lack of oversight and reconciliation and things being posted to the wrong places. So it is taking a while because it's a lot to get through. Uh, but, and there are, as I said, there are things we're still looking into um, that before we issue a final report, we'll need to, to put our finger on and get comfortable with, with what really happens so we can issue a report on it. Miranda or Ron, do you have anything to add before we open it up?
I have nothing.
Okay, Miranda.
I agree. I don't have anything to add at this time.
Okay, so I'll defer to the board and the administration if you have questions or other things that you'd like us to highlight.
Yeah, I think Jack would like to go first. And I think you have to unmute them because we muted everybody, right?
Well, they can unmute themselves as they go, so.
Thank you, thank you. Um, yeah, I appreciate this. We may have an extended conversation that since we have a full agenda tonight. I think that some of us were hoping that we would focus on what we need to approve our budgets for, uh, right now. Uh, and we, I think Deb Wright and others of us have said that uh, one of the things we need to do to be comfortable approving our budgets is to know that, that the revenue lines and at least roughly the expenditure lines are, are accurate. So that we can go forward with a, with a budget based on real figures. And the reason this was important is because again, we were seeing a unexpectedly large reduction in SU expenses. And have you seen the budget and are you comfortable with those numbers? Because you're kind of our substitute, um, our substitute finance director for the moment in terms of, you know, being able to say, are these real numbers? Because we normally ask them of a person that's not here right now.
Sure. So we have not looked at your budget line by line, but we have talked with Andy extensively about the things that we found and the adjustments that needed to be made. And it's my understanding that he has incorporated that into the budget. Um, Andy can probably speak to that as well. Um, but we had, you know, I, I'm not surprised to hear that you're seeing an unexpected decrease in expenditures based on what we're seeing here and some of the things that, the way things were budgeted in the past.
Okay, um, and I'm going to ask for some indulgence from Jesse because I got a couple such questions. The, um, uh, the question that we may want to talk to you about, uh, separately from tonight because again, our budget is our, our primary focus, is the role of RHR Smith, uh, in this process. And the reason I ask this is because when those material issues came up last year, it had been represented to us that you all were going to be retained to help clean up the mess. And so it brings up a couple of things. One, were you retained to do that? And two, uh, if you were, you know, is why didn't they get fixed and did, or did you fix them and they got unfixed again? Or were, or, or what happened here? Because essentially I feel uncomfortable that we're, that you're kind of auditing to some extent your own books uh, and, and finding them deficient. And that's, that's kind of a problem. So I'm wondering if you can give us some, some clarity on that.
Brittany, can I hop in?
Absolutely, go ahead, Ron, yep.
So, so listen, Jack, so a couple of things, you know, one, we cleaned up through June 30, 2020 and came up through a period time of 21. And we made no management decisions, Jack. We actually worked with your people to help clean it up, you know, and, uh, you know, that, that way we didn't violate any independence rules. So a couple of things, somewhere in May, Jack, you guys went out to bid for audit proposal. We were basically, we were basically, for lack of a better word, not involved for almost three and a half months with the state of the state of the districts books, you know, through June 30, 21. We handed you adjustments, Jack, that didn't get posted. Matter of fact, some of those adjustments, we actually told you, Rockingham, if this adjustment wasn't post, we told your management, if the adjustment's not posted, Rockingham is, will overpay you $700,000. We told you that last fiscal year. Your management did nothing about that. You guys didn't contact us. We were virtually in the dark for three and a half months. When we tried to come there and do our preliminary audit and had that scheduled for a month, your management kicked us out the door. They didn't even show up, Jack, when we were supposed to be there. And if I sound a little bit upset, I very much am, Jack, because we extended our hands for three, three and a half months. And we were constantly heard crickets from your management in that business office, Jack. So there's my, there's my answer to that.
Okay, because none of us knew about any of this.
Yeah.
The only person that had a hint that it was, it was screwed up was, uh, my colleague, David Clark, who was behind at a couple of meetings trying to make clear that there was something not, there was something awry. So I, I appreciate this because this is, this has come up with meetings with, uh, with select boards and public meetings. And their question is, what happened and is there, was there a contract? And where's the documentation of what the arrangement was? And I know I've not seen it. And it was an issue that got very chippy with some of our management people. And it wasn't just the, uh, it wasn't just the finance director, it was the superintendent. So I thank you for clarification on that.
And Jack, I don't mean to be come across as short, but I'm going to tell you, it was a rough three months for us as we extended our hands, knowing that there were some problems and literally not being able to assist and help.
Thank you. I, 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 I hear you. Thanks. Uh, Justin, when we get around, I have a question specific to, uh, to the unified district board, but I'm going to let other people have their questions.
All right, who else?
I have a question.
Who is that? Jigs McCollum, go ahead.
Okay, uh, yes, the, um, obviously I'm new to the, uh, uh, to the, well, the budget committee. I'm not on the board, but I'm on the Rockingham board. Uh, obviously I'm very concerned about, uh, the, the Rockingham books too. So that's, but that's a different day. The, uh, as, as you know, uh, the finance director, uh, was let go or she resigned after she was put on administrative leave following your letter of, in December. Um, so it's easy to say, well, the problem was Flora. But, uh, I think those of us that have been around the block a few times realize that, uh, it's, it's never just one person. And, uh, my concern, of course, is the future going forward. And, uh, so I'm concerned about your take on the depth of the personnel problems as it relates to our finances. Uh, and, uh, uh, you know, Jack has just mentioned, uh, a reference to our former superintendent. Uh, but, uh, I'm more concerned about the existing staff. Uh, we're looking for a new director, but, uh, obviously, um, I want to go forward uh, with confidence that the staff that's in place today uh, is capable of doing the work that's, that's assigned to them, uh, to their responsibility. So that's, that's my, my big question.
Brittany, you want me to hop in on that one too?
Go ahead, Ron.
So James, it's a great question. And as we've had conversations with Andy, you know, you definitely have great staff in that finance office and some of the chairs, you know, that where, and, and I don't want to minimize that staff as far as what their roles be, you know, whether it be paying the bills or payroll. The problem is, James, is the accounting oversight, the lack of the accounting pedigree in that office. And, and in my, my opinion, James, as an outsider looking in, it's lacking. You know, a lot of the people that you have in place right now, James, you know, and talking with Andy, they're outside consultants. We kind of stepped back in that role this year so we could have this conversation. We brought back, I know Andy, your former business manager, you know, to bring that. We bought some accounting pedigree, you know, in there, James, because that's what we believe you guys are sorely missing. And we believe still it's sorely missing, you know, James. And then the oversight of that accounting pedigree, you know, is something, as we've talked with Andy, trust but verify, you know, having somebody in a position, you know, that's able to understand the accounting nuances because, you know, there's a problem there right now. And, and, and when you have to bring outsiders in, you know, to really kind of have conversations like this and really kind of get to the point where you're talking about budgets and the accuracy of information, those aren't good conversations to have, you know, when you're relying on us as outsiders as opposed to your internal people. So accounting is a big need in that office and that's one of the emphasis that we've put on with Andy. That's something that you definitely need.
Okay, now the, to follow up, the, uh, the, assuming that the finance, the new finance director is an accountant. It has an accountant, accounting pedigree, as you say. Uh, is that sufficient or are we talking about, um, uh, a finance director with accounting pedigree as well as a staff member with accounting pedigree?
James, you just hit it on the head right there with your analogy. I think you're talking about a business manager that clearly has some financial capacity and accounting capacity and a controller, you know, that literally is a compliment, you know, with some more accounting capacity, James. That's, that's to me, you know, as the outsider looking in. You actually had that, you know, when you had your former business manager and the controller. That's something that's been missed since those positions virtually, um, you know, uh, those, those positions were vacated and filled. They just weren't filled with that same type of accounting pedigree.
Okay. All right, I have, I have one other question. Uh, uh, Madam Chairman, I can wait for others to, to jump in or, or ask it now.
With that first.
Oh, we're going to let Priscilla follow up in that line.
And then go back to.
And then we'll go back to you.
Um, I'm listening to you, Ron. But a year ago, I sat here and I could count at least five times that our business manager was labeled as awesome. And now you're telling me, you know, there were these problems. I was feeling like there were problems a year ago. But after listening to your people tell us how awesome she was, I was trying to calm myself down. Now I'm supposed to listen to, to what you're telling me that the business office is going to be okay. Um, where do I go with that?
So Priscilla, here's my response to that. Your business manager virtually was hired last year and had no, you know, um, uh, share or, you know, virtually, you know, DNA when it came to the 2020 audit. And the conversations that Miranda and I had with the information that we had and with sitting down conversations, not only with your business manager, but the actual accountant in that office. There, we, 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 we literally were given information of their capacity. And that accounting manager, certainly with what we gave them, Priscilla, you know, basically did exactly what we said. Somewhere in May or June though, Priscilla, those conversations stopped after we had the. those conversations stopped. After we had the conversation with the board, we basically, we were basically told that, that we've paid too much money, your services, you know, are no longer required, we're going to go out to bid, you know, etc. They stopped, Priscilla, with those correspondence. So I can't even comment and opine, you know, when we didn't even have the ability to go in and look at 21's books and records, you know, after we had that conversation, Priscilla. We were literally put on the outside looking in on a need to know basis. There's my answer to you, Priscilla.
Okay, but what about, I mean, I'm talking about last January.
Last January, when we, any conversation, Priscilla, we would have had, would have been on the 20 audit. You know, your previous business manager, you know, that's resigned, you know, had no, no bearing on that 20 audit, no bearing, zero. You know, she, I don't even know what she had on the 21 audit. It wasn't, it wasn't that person's budget. She, we very, we had very little interaction. From the interaction that we had with her and the superintendent, you know, we understood that there was going to be corrective action put in place. There wasn't corrective action put in place. So that, that's, again, my response, Flora, is that, is to the business manager, you know, is as far as that goes, Priscilla, you know, and working with them and putting that corrective action place, we were insured, you know, assured, you know, that there was going to be an action plan put in place. We never had a chance, you know, to monitor that, Priscilla, not until September, you know, October, when is the first time that we came in, which is the last time, you know, you know, five months had probably expired, Priscilla, you know, since the conversation, you know, that we had with this board, you know. So, so back in January, back in April, Priscilla, when we had these conversations, after that, it went dark. We weren't allowed to go in there and nor were we solicited after we extended our hand, Priscilla, you know. So, so there, again, there's my response, is, is the fact that we never had a chance to make sure that your corrective action plan was in place. All, the arrangement that we had was to help you out and assist management with their bank reconciliations. And we fulfilled that responsibility, Priscilla. After that, we had no knowledge of 2021.
Okay, I was just, I was just looking at how much, you know, she had done and whether it was actually.
Priscilla, I'm gonna go on again, just to make sure that I'm clear. We tried twice to get in there, and we had at least 30 days fair warning when we were supposed to come in and help. And your management, Priscilla, didn't show up. We were actually rescheduled twice. And I believe, Miranda, you can hop in here, it was literally at the 11th hour as we were almost en route to this place, correct?
Yes.
So, Priscilla, I'm a little upset. You know, I understand what our role is, which is one of the reasons what I told Andy, let's get the former business manager in here and let's let her assess the state of the book. And I'll let you, Priscilla, have this same conversation with her, you know, that she can, she can kind of reiterate exactly what it is that I'm saying.
I was just trying to figure out what you were given versus what, you know, and why you would have assessed it that way.
Yeah. Priscilla, my concern is, is I've heard a lot of street talk out there. And Andy and I have had a lot of street talk conversations because of all the municipal work we do down there in that area, you know, and not once, you know, were we ever asked or was somebody called saying, hey, we heard, you know, that there's some problems here, there may be some problems with the budget, you know, we didn't, we weren't able, again, Priscilla, to look into that until September, October. And as we extended our hands, as we were listening to this street talk that I'll refer to it as, it's a pretty tough position for us to be in, Priscilla, especially when we try to come down there. And literally, we were shunned. We were shunned.
That's, that's a shame. Sorry that you had to face that. Thank you.
Uh, Jigs had another. Yes, Jigs gets to follow up, and then Deb, right. And Jack, is your hand actually up again or still up? Okay. Jigs, your question number three.
Okay. The, I've, again, I'm, I'm, I'm brand new here on the, on the board, and I've started to receive some financial statements which are, which leave a lot to be desired. And the, the explanation is that the, the accounting system that the, the state imposed on us is a, is a tough one. My question is, that in the past, and I was on the board previously under the different accounting system. And we always received, you know, monthly financial statements that included revenues. Do the, does, does the accounting system that we have now, is it capable of providing us, the board, a revenue statement?
Yeah. So, so the answer is yes and no. So the reporting in e-finance is not good. And so any information that you get from there requires significant manipulation. So you can get the information, but it's not going to be as pretty or as readable or as accessible as it was in your prior system.
I'll tell you, the, you probably know the reason. We, we learned just a couple of weeks ago that the, they failed to send out the tuition bills.
Yes.
And so, you know, Rockingham, obviously, that collects tuition, you know, obviously didn't, wasn't aware of the fact that they hadn't received the, that, that source of income. And, you know, if, if, obviously, if the board was provided a, a, a revenue statement along with expenses, then you'd be able to pick that up very easily.
Yes.
If you don't get it, you don't know those things. And I think the, and this becomes a broader issue, not for tonight, is how do we get our accounting system to provide reasonable information about revenue, both against anticipated as well as the actual?
Yeah.
James, are you aware that the state legislature has now put the options back to the school district to abandon e-finance or continue to stay with it with their support and basically look at additional software to their needs? Are you aware of that, James?
I was not.
Yeah. So that just came out, Brittany, correct, before Christmas, correct?
Yeah, not long ago at all. Yeah.
James, I was actually supposed to testify. I was on the original testimony last spring, James, on that, to really talk about the root of the e-finance problems. And if there's anybody that painfully knows about that, it's Wyndham Northeast, you know, with the struggles that you had. James, it was so bad statewide. The state legislature wanted to give e-finance a, you know, a chance. And they basically just pulled the plug on e-finance, James, late last fall before the holidays, you know, to give the, to give the, to give the school districts now the opportunity, you know, to, you know, to, to literally survive, for lack of a better way to say it. There was supposed to be some testimony in the legislature tomorrow, James. They're not ready yet. They're trying to come up with an alternative plan with some of the details. But my recommendation to be to Wyndham Northeast is, you know, is to literally look at the software hard. You guys have made a significant investment. We have some real concerns about the, you know, the functionality of that software to provide accurate financial information, you know. And I understand that one of the details that they're talking about, you know, is basically allowing continued support with some of the money that's been paid into the software now, and basically allowing the schools to go back to other softwares. Those are the details that are being worked out right now. But I'll go on record, as I did with the legislature in the testimony last year, James, that is not a functional software where this board is going to get the best chance to make informations for any school system in the state of Vermont. And the Agency of Education, you know, has done their due diligence, and they have reported back to the legislature that very fact, James.
Yeah. Ron's absolutely correct. The system is, is totally subpar. And our firm has been really kind of on the front lines of trying to support districts that have implemented and try to help support them in saying, in raising the alarm about it, you know, trying to lend credibility from an auditor perspective, saying like, this is not good. At the same time, you absolutely can get revenue. But, and there's definitely a way to do that. And we can work with management on that. So you can get revenue.
And James, those assessment issues weren't, weren't software issues. Those were management functionality issues, James. And, you know, and that's the second piece. I just wanted to go there. Two distinct, you know, two distinct issues, James. But the software is clearly a problem. My recommendation to Wyndham Northeast is every other school system that we do, you know, is if they can't continue to make this software work and, you know, and quite frankly, continue the investment that they're making into this software, you know, that you need to look at other alternative solutions so you guys can make good business decisions based on the information that's given you that you can feel confident about. And we're just not confident with that software.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Deb, right, you're up.
Sure. I don't really have any questions for RHR because I believe we've been in slow motion falling into this chasm since 2019. We've gone through more than one Finance Director who have, or Business Office Manager, who have, who have had problems for the last few years. So I, I knew this was all going on. I don't trust the numbers. It's why you always hear me voting no on budgets and things like that. However, I appreciate Ron telling us, it's the first time we've heard about abandoning e-finance. That's, it's good to know that. But there are other physical, human issues that we still have to deal with. However, what I want to address with you, Jessa, because we're required to put names on the, whoever's taking our minutes of the participants in both Zoom and, and the meeting room, are we comfortable with someone named anonymous being on this call? Only because everyone who participates is supposed to be listed, and the person who's anonymous doesn't want to put their name on here to be counted as a member of this meeting. And so I'm just asking that question of you as you are the chair.
Well, I think we only take names when people speak traditionally, especially when we have big meetings like the high school. Maybe Jack has an answer to that. Anybody can watch.
Anybody can watch, but I, I think that given there's potential legal exposure about some of this, and we've had at least one former member or under our employ who's got to see some tire tracks on their back, from what we've said. And there's probably another one I'd be eager to put in online, namely a former Assistant Superintendent. I think it's reasonable to say, you know, if you're, if you're anonymous and unwilling to, unwilling to say so, that is reasonable to ask them to either announce themselves or leave. We, people are absolutely invited to participate in these. And this will be a public document. But I do think it's, I think Deb's got a very good point. I would ask them to say who they are. By the way, that's, by the way, that's not my set of questions to the accountants.
No, I understand. Well, I will check these state statutes while you ask your question.
Yeah, because coasting on these kind of platforms and, and, you know, problems have, have come up, particularly in Zoom over anonymous accounts. All right. Hey, Ron, I really appreciate what you said tonight. One of the things that would, as a guy who knows how, knows why we document things, I'm, I'm assuming that if we asked you to forward copies of some of the correspondence between you and the previous administration, you'd be more than happy to get that to us if we asked for it, just in case we find ourselves in a position with lawyers at some.
More than happy to, Jack. And one of the biggest ones is, is when we, as Priscilla, you know, alluded to, you know, as far as, you know, what didn't we say, what did we say?
Yeah.
The, the, the Rockingham assessment, we brought that up during our last contract that last spring, and management did nothing with it, Jack. So for seven months, Rockingham had that. We'd be more than happy to furnish you those correspondence, you know, about these same very matters, you know, one by one. And, you know, and quite frankly, the, you know, some of the others that kind of tell this story, for sure.
Yeah, I think our, our, you know, overall, we have a Finance and Ops Committee that hasn't met in a very long time. And it was partly formed to do this kind of oversight. And I think that at a point sooner rather than later, it'd be useful for them to just see it so that you can say, yeah, we've seen it, and we're comfortable that, in fact, you guys were burning, you know, you guys were setting your hair on fire and nothing was happening. That would, that would be very useful.
Jack, we'll pack it, we'll package up that information and send it off to Andy for his review. I think we've actually talked about some of this stuff with him. Andy, I don't know what we've given you for, you know, for actually documentation, but that'll be easy for us to, to package it up and forward that off to Andy, Jack, and whoever, you know, the conversations need to, you know, to allude to as far, as far as the journal entries and the lack of those postings, us trying to get in there, being rescheduled, we could package up that story, Jack. Easy enough.
A second, a quick follow up, if you might. Chart of accounts, we, it was very clear when we started the budget process back, we started pepping for it back early this fall, before everybody left involuntarily, the, that the chart of accounts were still not fully converted, you know, and, and, because when we tried to run numbers and get a report out to guide us, it was clear that some places stuff was in the current chart. And sometimes there were, there were, there were places where it should have gone, which was, there was nothing in, there was nothing in the, in the line. And are we comfortable now that the chart accounts are accurate and fully filled in, and that's no longer a problem?
Jack, let me just hop in. And then Brittany used to sit in the business manager chairs at one of your counterpart school systems, you know, in, in, in your defense and every other school district's defense, Jack, in the state of Vermont, the state of Vermont just implemented the new chart of accounts over the past year. So as they were trying to implement this new chart of accounts and standardize it to the US federal governments, they were going through the e-finance implementation, Jack. And it was a recipe for disaster, you know. And Brittany can tell you about that. So where am I going with it? The state changed their mind and actually never had a final chart of accounts, Brittany, correct? It was like three or four revisions to that chart of accounts as these school districts were trying, Jack, to implement e-finance. So the chart of accounts was still subject, for lack of a better word, edits, you know, from the word go. And even, Jack, up until this audit goes knee deep into the 2021 audit, I still think that there were other versions being presented by the Agency of Education as they were working with all the school systems. Your chart of accounts is based upon one of those, you know, blueprints, Jack. You know, unfortunately, you know, to transition from your old blueprint to the new blueprint and a new software, there was a lot of work that's been done, you know, you're about as close as you've ever been, you know, to that in your new software, Jack, you know. And that might be one of the things that you consider as you kind of look at your software options. But I think you've got the closest version, Jack, to that, given all the fact that the, of the different variations that was presented to you and all the other schools. And you're pretty close to that federal uniform guidance of that chart of accounts that the Agency of Education did. Problem is, e-finance had limitations with that chart of accounts.
Yeah, it really is.
Yeah. And Jack, I think that part, part of the problem, most of the problem really is not that the chart of accounts is incorrect, although there may be inconsistency still. It's more that things were just misposted, not categorized correctly or not categorized at all, and just didn't even exist on the, in the software in any way. And so I think that that's being worked on and has been worked on in the FY23 budget. However, in FY22, everything that we're going through for FY21 has been happening already in FY22 for seven months. So we're going to be running into many of these same issues. So literally, as soon as we're done with FY21, management is going to have to turn its attention to 22 to fix it.
Okay. Because, you know, the, clearly, the issue is going to be, who's going to own cleaning this up? And is it you guys? Is it somebody else? Because I, you know, we just got done, done our budgetary review. And I'm not, I don't know, Andy, maybe you can help me. Who's, who's, who is the body that's going to be doing this? Because this is a full time gig for a year.
So we, again, we've been working with Glenn Hansking, I probably pronounced that wrong, and Casey, I can't think of her last name. And basically, Casey is offering that support, kind of what Ron was talking about, is the, is the, the accounting, with the accounting pedigree. And so she's been directing virtually our current staff on, on working on this rectification right now of FY22. So we're working right now to make sure we're coding things correctly, and then we're posting revenue in the right spots and whatnot. So we are actively working on that. It's just, you know, we've got a new staff member in there, and so bringing that staff member up to, up to speed, they're getting their real. They're getting there real close, but they're working with folks at at RHR Smith and with with the consultants to to kind of work on that right now. So we we started that about a week or about a week ago. But it will also be, if we're able to find a new finance manager, is to is to how are they going to shape things and what? Who are they going to dedicate to do that work while we still have the work of moving forward, you know?
All right. And and do we have a controller type person in our budget?
I mean, we have the staffers on who's who we have on staff right now.
This is a different function.
So, correct. And so so that would be a something to go back and look at to build into the budget.
Okay, thank you.
Jack, when the equivalent of your last controller left, that position, literally, you know, as far as accounting pedigree, didn't get filled, Jack, and that's been a big problem, you know, you know, for your district. And I think that that's something you got to go back to that root, Jack. I really do.
Thank you. When we get to the budget, people can anticipate adding my moving to add $100,000 to the to our budget specifically to cover that contingency, just in case anyone's wondering. Thank you very much.
Way you're way over. You're way beyond where you should be, Jack.
We'll we'll chat. Chat when we get there.
All right, who's next? Do I see any more hands? Cheryl, go ahead. All right. Well, so Ron and team, given everything you've told us right now, I'll make one comment, that the looking at this projected surplus in the 2021 audit, it's real clear to me, looking at the budget reports, even as limited as they are every two weeks, that there were things that I knew had been expended. For example, the tuitions for seventh and eighth grade, they just have not been invoiced. So I can see that that problem was there. That leads me to say that that potential that you're looking at, that 1.1 million, is largely what you said a few minutes ago, money's not properly posted or invoice is not not created at all. I mean, as you said, I mean, there were expenditures that have occurred that have not been posted against that budget. That's what I think we're going to see. And we've already begun seeing that. So my question is, how long do you think it will take, actually, at this point in time to finish the 2021 audit?
We're all good with the SU. I think that we've pretty much exhausted that to the point where we're comfortable with those numbers. Our concern right now would be working with your transition team, for lack of a better way to say it, Glenn, Casey, your existing staff right now. We've already told Andy where a lot of the bad math was in the budget, once we were able to identify it. You know, your former controller, for lack of a better way, that came in certainly weighed, you know, in on the matter as well. So I think we've identified a lot of the bad math where Andy's been able to easily go in and, you know, for lack of a better word, you know, put together a much more consistent budget that's that's based upon reality, you know, you know, with the numbers that's been provided by 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 your outsiders, you know, including somebody that used to work there. So and now that he's got a former business manager that was responsible for the largest geographical school system in the state of Vermont that we have great confidence in, I think compounded to answer your question, really, a lot of these things have been addressed, you know, right now. And I can assure you, we've been having weekly meetings with Andy, you know, and your staff on these matters, and and those weren't happening back in the spring. Those were not happening. So.
I understand that. And so are you leading to, that wasn't exactly my question, but are you leading to a kind of asserting that the 2023 budget that Andy and team have been working on is something you think we can have confidence in?
Correct. Correct.
Thank you. Who else would like to address RHR Smith? So Deb, to your meeting with Anonymous, still looking into it, your choices at this point, though, because we did not provide individual links to the meeting, we can recess this meeting while we address the technical issue, or we can continue on.
Well, I'm pointing I'm pointing it out that it's not, it does not seem appropriate that people are not identified. And my understanding is, even if the people do not speak, typically, the clerk takes down all the names of everyone who is is in the meeting, whether virtually or otherwise, and lists them, even if they don't have anything to say. It's not a matter that they that they were speaking for some reason, but that they had to be listed as participants in the meeting. And someone with the name of Anonymous is clearly not accurate and wishing not to not to participate. They could simply be listening on Fact TV and they didn't have to zoom in. But if they zoom in, they need to be listed in minutes. So I am simply saying, are we comfortable? And if 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 everyone else is on the board is comfortable with that, then there we go. But it is perhaps something that needs to go on a future agenda to see how we wish to react, respond, or address. That's it.
But if we just ask them. If they want to identify themselves, but we don't take IDs when they come to sit at the high school, do we? I mean, you can change your name to whatever you want. I'm good. It's do you, if we want to continue that discussion, we'll recess the minute because that recess the meeting because that's what BTBLC recommends while you sort out technical issues. I think if we go, you know, we can figure out where they are at least, if you want.
I see. But that will, of course, lengthen the meeting, of course, Jessa. And my thinking is, I'm not scared of whoever's anonymous. I'm simply saying it's just not appropriate to participate in a meeting and not name yourself. That's all. So if everyone else is fine, I don't need, I don't think we're, we need to recess the meeting.
Don't, as a matter of policy, take the names of everyone attending unless they speak. That's correct. However, sometimes these meetings are so small, before they were hybrid, that we did identify the two or three people that showed up in minutes. But we don't do that as a matter of policy.
That's correct. They don't show up at our minutes.
They have from time to time as others in attendance. But you'll recall, we've had meetings with 130 people. In that.
A lot of times we'll send the notebook around and ask them to sign in.
So if they want to change their name, they can. And what do you know, we will talk about our Zoom policies.
Are you all set with us? I'm sorry to interrupt.
Tendents, and they are identified in every meeting.
Not every meeting.
Yeah, they have been. Go ahead.
RHR Smith, we should let them know if we need them.
Yes, we are done with RHR Smith. Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you all. Listen, Andy, I look forward to packaging up that story and kind of compounding on Jack and Priscilla. You know, we definitely want more interaction with the board so we can avoid this going for the future. If you've got a finance committee, you know, Andy, may I suggest that we get together with them, you know, but we'll package that story up in a variety of correspondence to kind of like mimic what we what we've gone over tonight.
Thank you, Ron.
Everybody be well and safe.
When will we see Rockingham numbers?
I think that they exist right now, James, which is why they gave you, you know, kind of what Rockingham basically overpaid, you know, back last fiscal year and what their share, you know, of the 1.1 million dollars was, James. And Brittany, do you want to give James Rockingham's percentage of that was?
Yeah, it was reimbursed in about 500,000. But when is the next Rockingham board meeting?
I think it's the 18th.
January 18th.
Yeah, James, we can hop, we can hop in on that one next week, Andy, you know, and do the same thing that we did right now. We're prepared to talk about the two biggest school districts, you know, clearly. I think all three school districts were prepared to talk about, Andy, so we can hop in next week with Rockingham, you know, so that we can talk specific numbers with Rockingham, you know, and and kind of like the issues that we've seen and and really the financial impact. And the two big ones that we see, correct, Brittany, is the over assessment that we identified that we gave to management last year that wasn't, you know, deducted from their original assessment and basically their share, you know, of the 1.1 million dollars, which is about a half a million dollars, correct, Brittany?
Yes, and also the health insurance. That was pretty significant.
Insurance, yeah, correct.
We we may ask you at the Unified District, since it is splitting into pieces, you've mentioned the 135,000 dollars, and we thought we had cleaned up all of the allocations of surpluses and whatnot previously. But clearly, we're going to need to do that again, and we need to bring that before we'll need to bring that before our various our our voters, because we need to get that approved. So.
And Jack, that was largely part to the health insurance issues, you know, with budgeting, Jack, for for all the districts. That's the big thing that led to the unified, you know, over assessment. So.
Okay, thanks. Well, we'll, we'll, we'll look forward to your giving either doing it directly or giving Andy the split so that we can we can adjust that because we will need to have an agreement when the two when the two districts formally separate as of as of July, and since we are sending budgets to voters in March.
And because of that reason, Andy, whatever the meetings are that you got coming up with your districts, we will do everything within our power to attend those so we can talk, literally talk and get ourselves in the chairs of those districts, you know, financially.
Thank you. Ron, what are you doing tomorrow night?
Listen, I'm sorry, sorry. I already got two other commitments and and I've been on this one for about a half an hour. The city of Montpelier right now needs me. So I so I'm about to engage in that conversation. But anytime next week and going forward, and if you guys want to have private conversations, Andy, we're here to help and we look forward to those conversations.
Yeah, Andy, we'll touch base tomorrow. We'll look at your your board schedule and we'll get we'll get those on the calendar.
Yeah, and Andy, I think that Brittany and Miranda can probably have a conversation. What what board meeting do you have tomorrow night, Andy?
Fine, Unified Board, that's why.
Listen, listen, so Andy, let Miranda and Brittany talk you through that conversation. I just don't know if they can physically attend. I can't. But they can give you the state of the state of the finances as of June 30, 21, so that you can express that off to the to the Unified Board.
Thank you.
Yes, we do have a second. This is the extra meeting week for the Union Elementary. We do have another one at the end of the month.
You have another one at the end of January.
Yeah, but we but the budget one is now. The budget one is tomorrow.
Okay, all right. We'll get in touch with Andy first thing in the morning.
Thank you, ma'am.
I'll talk to them tomorrow. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Everybody take care, be safe.
Thank you.
Back to reports. Super, I'm sorry. Superintendent's report is next, yes?
Yes. So just a few things, because we've been focusing so much on the budget, as you know, so. But I just wanted to update everyone on the on COVID-19. With the return from the break, and this is up through last Saturday, we had 35 reported cases throughout the SU. And then on yesterday, the AOE formally announced the policy shift and how schools respond to COVID-19 related cases. And schools are directed to stop contact tracing activities and PCR surveillance testing in schools will be discontinued. I didn't I didn't see a press today. I did get an email from the secretary. It didn't cover any changes from that policy. But essentially, what we were told and superintendents were told last week as a kind of a prelim is that the test to stay program, which is connected to contact tracing, because we're going to stop contact tracing, we would stop doing the test to stay program where students came in, we tested them for five to seven days in a row. And as long as they were negative, they could come to school. There is language about us being able to provide those tests now to families to be able to to do the testing at home. The what, working with our health staff right now, what we're trying to figure out is what is our supply? And what can we physically provide the families? So that's the the big shift that we're trying to figure out. And so we haven't put anything new out as far as a protocol, how we're going to address it, because we have to look at where our supplies are and can we can we effectively provide every family with enough testing if they're looking for it. So.
So if you're stopped contact tracing and you've stopped test to stay, then what do you do?
So it was my understanding from talking with from reading through things and listening to the secretary that they feel that you're at a, we're at a point in the pandemic where everyone in a classroom is considered like a close contact, and so you're constantly shutting down classrooms and quarantining kids that as long as people are are not symptomatic, they should continue to come to school, is what we're being told.
They did also say on the on the news thing today that the nurses would have tests to be able to test for symptomatic.
And and that's, yes, and that's where trying to figure out our supply and making sure we have supplies on hand and we don't just give everything out. We also, they're, while they said they're stopping surveillance testing, I saw an email today that that said if we want to continue it, we can continue it. But we don't know if they're going to continue to pay for it. So there's a lot of this has some fiscal teeth to it. And that's what we're trying to still get some understanding and some clarity before we make some final decisions. So.
So a thing came over my iPad when I turned it on, right, that said, we get free tests, absolutely, you know, they'll ship the tests.
If you go to help to stay, the help.gov on.
Hello. The tests are all gone.
That was what I.
Okay.
Yeah, they've been gone for hours.
Well, first of all, the site crashed after this morning. I managed to get in there and got four tests. And it says now on the afternoon news that all 350,000 kits are gone. And that's only enough tests for 87,500 households. It's nowhere near enough.
Hold on, I was.
Go ahead.
Thank you. My point is that you're every single one of your families that gets this information that probably the same stuff happens on their machine as mine is they're going to try to get that. And there isn't any. It says to try back in a few days. So I don't want to spend a lot of time on this because I know everybody's tired and we've got a lot to take care of. But I think you had some parents contact you. And I think it's only fair to them because some for some people, this is a big deal, that we just kind of get it out and that's the only reason I was breaking it up, is to just get it out there so that people know that, you know, you're working on it and we've worked on it and.
And we have not changed the protocol that we we were implementing last week when they changed from the 10 days to the five days and all that stuff. So we always lag behind where the where the AOE guidance is because we're still trying to sort it all out.
And my understanding from everything I've tried to read to learn, you know, in school and business, wherever it is, some of that is your choice on how you want your school to be run with, you know, with this pandemic. Is that?
So that's, so when 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 the state moved away from the the state of emergency and moved to the guidance model, then everything was pushed back down onto schools and districts to make individual decisions on how they wanted to implement things. And so, again, where my concerns are, if if we say we are going to continue a test to stay model, I'll just use that as an example, then we have to be also able to procure enough tests to maintain that. We have ESR funds, so I mean, obviously, we could we could tip or go into those funds to utilize to do that. But can we even
Yeah.
get them, right? And so that like that's that's one piece. And so that's where we're trying to parse this out to figure out, can we do this? And so that we can come with a sound protocol of how we're going to go forward. So.
I wasn't trying to.
No, no.
Rehash, but I think it's important. I think it's important for the community to just hear that, you know.
So I finally found, because the state spoke and told us where to get information before actually updating the website, later this week, they plan on distributing. before actually updating the website, later this week, they plan on distributing more test kits. The, so if your unvaccinated kid is in a classroom and has to test for the five days, tests come in packs of two. But this, according to the state, they're going to give the test kits to the school, so your kid will get five when they are a close contact that has to test at home. So those will be provided. You don't have to go, the ones that were available today from the state to be mailed was a different, a different program, not just for.
No guarantee. Clarification, what we were told was families were supposed to go out and try and get their own first, and then if they cannot, then we will provide them. So this is, this is where we have been dealing with this conflicting information. And we have, we're not jumping in to just say we're throwing the baby out with bathwater. We want to look at what is best for WNESU community and how we proceed, so.
Jack's hands up.
I just want to read the rest of this, because I bet they didn't tell you this. According to the state's public information, the ESUs will act as distribution sites for the test kits for the independent schools.
We have, we have that, no, we do, we do that already. And so the test kits come to us and then we do distribute them out to our independent schools, campus and the grammar school and whatnot, so.
Go ahead, Jack.
Yeah, you know, I have Korean in-laws who feel very sorry for us. And, you know, I got, we've had conversations now twice, back when there was no PPE. And we had, we had people parking airplanes in Toronto so you could sneak stuff across the border. And I had almost the same kind of conversation, again, the foreign Americans can't seem to get their act together. Now, we're dealing with wishful ignorance here, because not, we're saying, oh, we're going to do this via InstaTest, the 15-minute turnaround Benax test, but we don't have any. Or we're going to give them to parents and we'll hope that they get back to us and tell us the results. In either case, that's not, you can't run any sort of rational disease control program based on, well, we'll give them to somebody else. We won't be responsible. We have no guarantee as to the accuracy, but we're going to run a program based on that. And that's exactly what's happening. We're being told they're going to be handed out to somebody that's not us, but they're actually not going to be handed out, because there aren't any. And we're, and never mind all that, just continue to carry on and run the program. And that's what we're being asked to do, and that's insane. I recognize that we're in a position where we don't have any choice, but to claim this is somehow empowering local school districts is a height of hypocrisy. It just, it just is, it's offensive to anybody that's ever tried to run a program. And it needs to be stated that that is.
Back to the agenda, I mean.
This is the agenda, damn it. This is, this is the state of, this is the state of the district as being reported to you by your superintendent.
Well, I'd like to hear the superintendent, but.
Well, so this is why I left the COVID-19 off the meeting, as passionate as I am about it, because the state keeps saying the end of the week, they will have more information. So back to Andy.
So just on one follow-up on part of that procedural change that was also happening is with the close contacting, is the health staff has to input all of those names of close contacting. And so without doing it, that it's one less thing that they're going to have to do. So the schools, going back to kind of where Molly was and some of the other members were, we can continue to do close contacting, we're just not going to be reporting all of those folks up to the state potentially. So, so again, our nurses are exceptional. They've done, they've done a tremendous amount of work. And I take their counsel very seriously of what we need to do. We met, we met over the weekend, we met again on Monday to, you know, hammer this down. We'll be meeting again near the end of the week as these protocols change so that we can come out with things. And then what we'll look to do is have a date. So if something's going to change, we will announce when those dates will be and we'll provide enough times so that we can, we're not just pivoting the next day, so. But also in the business office, just going down through the rest of it, we've talked a lot about it with the absence of the business office. You know, I, there's been a lot of time spent supporting the staff in the business office. The members of the business office are to be commended at stepping up. They really have pulled out during this time. And also just wanted to make everyone aware, we do have a new staff member, her name is Shirley Lynch, and she's replaced Shawna. She's done a tremendous job just in a short period of time of getting to know the system and helping out. So it has been very helpful. The budget has been our major focus and refining the budget, which we had a meeting today and we'll look for a vote on today. We're also working to meet the town deadlines for publishing, which we know are fast approaching, I think tomorrow, this one. The audit, which Ron Smith and his associates presented the short report. And then there, as they said, they're continuing to work on the audits to get to that final spot of report, so.
All right, questions on Andy's report? Nine. Next up was the COVID policy. Okay, Policy Committee.
Priscilla. Just a quick thing, when the Policy Committee met, we approved six different policies to bring to the board. There are slight tweaks, the policies, as soon as I get the tweaks put up for budget, we put it off a little bit and posted for people to look at. And then at the meetings in February, we'll get them, get them approved. They are A1, board member conflict of interest, B1, substitute teachers, B2, volunteers and work-study students, policy and procedures, B5, employee unlawful harassment, B7, tobacco prohibition, and home studies students. This policy had actually been removed from our policy book, but is now a required policy in the state, so we're putting it back in under C6. And they're just slight tweaks to those policies and just slight changes. So we did those quickly at our last meeting.
Thank you. Those, we put on the agenda for adoption.
They will be.
For the next.
We need 10, then we need to have them posted 10 days before a meeting so that the public can look at them. And as long as I get the actual tweaks put into Nicole's, so she can post them, then we'll get them posted and then a meeting after that. We'll ask if you put on the agenda. But this is just a heads up that they're.
Okay, so as I say, if you hurry, you can make 10 days.
Okay.
Because we have, we'll probably be having our second meeting this month.
Okay, okay.
Depending on, I mean, if everybody's budgets go through and everything's good, then maybe not. So we're probably having our second meeting this month.
I'll try to get that.
Should be in two weeks.
Just extra for Nicole too right now, so I was also trying to, calling this the first schedule as well as mine, but I'll work for that so that we can have that.
All right. Thank you. Questions for Cheryl, Priscilla, not Cheryl? No, all right. Old business, we're going to have a COVID update, although I think Andy covered that. But Cheryl, would you have more you wanted to?
Do, but I wondered if you wanted to do the budget update first in sequence? And then I thought.
We made the budget update to its own item, because we're going to vote on a presented budget.
Well, then let me add just a couple of comments on COVID. And that's just in perspective, at least in the Westminster folks I'm hearing from. I haven't talked with people in Grafton, so I can't, I can't address that. But we have felt like tests to stay had worked well, that the surveillance system had worked well, that even with Omicron and this increase in numbers of cases, people had felt some confidence and a sense of safety. I heard, I checked then, because I'm hearing this indirectly, I'm hearing a worry from parents and from teachers, actually, without this additional surveillance dimension. So I asked Liz today, and I asked what Megan, our school nurse, and the other nurses, thought about the new guidance. And she gave me permission to share, this being Liz Hardy, her comments tonight. You know, the first is that we will be depending on parents to test their child throughout the quarantine program. I personally am not sure, this is yet one more thing, on the, on the, on the shoulders of already highly stressed parents, when we had a system that was working well at the school. So that's at least a thought for everyone to consider. She also said, how long, and this is to Andy's point, how long will we have enough rapid tests to hand out? The new guidance allows us to give rapid tests to students who are close contacts with a positive case outside of school, which is a change. We had three boxes of rapid tests on Monday, and we're now down to one box. I'm not sure how realistic it is to keep this pace. She comments on surveillance testing and says we're not, we're no longer doing that. So Andy, that's actually a question, because I thought we were keeping the system in place until more explicit guidance came.
So we, we did the surveillance test on Tuesday.
Okay.
Because that was our school protocol. The reason we may have to cancel it is because the state, to my understanding, has not shipped us, they ship it on a weekly basis. And I don't know if we've gotten our next shipment.
So these are concerns. I'd love us all to be thinking about and address at our local school district board meetings as well. But about surveillance testing, she says, for Westminster Community School, this is a disappointment, as we have found many asymptomatic positive cases through our surveillance testing. Surveillance testing was also giving peace of mind for the staff, who wanted to be sure about the status of people. So if we're missing the asymptomatic, that's another issue. If we're only testing symptomatic students, in the past, when we were notified, we would test to stay all close contacts, begin the test to stay for the next seven days. Now we're only testing any close contacts who are symptomatic and we're sending home rapid tests with unvaccinated students. This feels like we have less of a handle on COVID now within our school. So that's for everyone's consideration.
If I may, one of the, and I spoke with a health professional, one of the things they brought up is with the reduction of the quarantine incubation time or isolation time down to five days, and when someone tests positive, you go back two days. Often, we were getting turnaround on our surveillance testing in 24 hours. With the increase of testing around the place, like, that is, we've seen a little bit of a lag. We're still getting good turnaround. But if you do, you might not even be getting the positive test back until what the person might have already done that five days. So that's going to be, you know, those are the kind of things that, when I, like, those, we have to think that out, because if someone tests positive today, if we've gone out today that someone's positive, you're going to go back two days. And that means that they now have two more days that they're going to quarantine, because it's a five-day quarantine at the time. But if we're, if we don't get that test back sooner, I mean, we might have that person positive in our building all that time. So that's, I think, that was my understanding from the state, was that the PCR testing wasn't coming back reliable enough and enough time to really help us. I agree with Liz that the surveillance testing has been a benefit in our district.
So I only wanted to be on record for this. I think we all need to talk about it further. And I think one of the issues, again, for community members, is the agency of education making these changes Friday afternoon and upsetting a system that had been working relatively well, and now is still not coming out with clear guidance, adding to confusion and stress for families and our staff. That's where I'll leave it for now. Thank you.
Anyone else? I did hear Dan French on VPR today, and he's apparently come to realize that the Friday evening announcement was probably not the best for those very reasons. All right, next up, I'm sure we'll root this event topic in our next meeting and might as well put it on the agenda next. School calendar for 22, 23.
All right. Just going to pop that up there. So this, this out of the way. Go here. So what we are proposing for a calendar is a start day for next year on August 31st, with four days prior to that being in-service days, professional development days for teachers. We are also proposing to continue with the early release days on most months, on months where they kind of butt up against a professional development day, not having that early release, like in October there, where the 11th is an in-service day, we wouldn't have an early release on that day. But this aligns fairly close with our neighboring districts, and especially with our, the career centers. And looking at it, some of the differences, some of the career, one of the career centers actually, I think they have an in-service on November 11th as opposed to a full day off type of thing. So, you know, so there's some variations there. We have traditionally always taken the two days before Thanksgiving as parent teacher conference and also an in-service. So, but again, it does mimic that very closely. And what we've also looked at doing is continuing on with the town meeting day currently. And then this year, you know, we built in that Monday before it, but that was because of where it fell with the, with the February break. So just making that, what is really early this year, or looks early, is the April break. My understanding from the other superintendents when we talk about this is it's been creeping, and it's because of the counting of the weeks between the two. And so it's just kind of creepy, but it should kind of move back down closer to the end of April next year, from what they said. Where this would put us is a last day for students with no snow day as of June 13th. And then the 14th would be an in-service day, and then graduation would still be on Thursday to 15th.
Andy, I, in looking at that, I have one real concern over that, and I do have one suggestion, and I understand that you have looked at this with the Teachers Association as well. But if you do not have an in-service day for teachers on the 15th, that means we don't have teachers there for that, to help with graduation. So my recommendation would be, if you want to leave everything else, because the other districts, but to take and give one additional day at Christmas time, do a half day on Wednesday instead of Thursday, and move one day more to June, so that you have teachers working on the 15th.
So.
Preparation for graduation, because the teachers have to be here. One year, we ended up having to pay a teacher extra, because we didn't have them working on that day. This would cause them to be working on that day, provided there were no snow days.
So we can't take an extra day off in December, because that would, that, I mean, well, I guess we could just take it as a full day off, which would push it out that extra day, yeah.
And this lines with the tech center?
Vacation days do align with the tech center, yes.
But in last year in December, it, they had a day off and we didn't in December, as opposed to all snow. So it doesn't always work out anyway. So this would not impact them that terribly much, just the one day. I'm sorry, it's a suggestion.
Do we need to report the calendar?
Yeah. So, I mean, we can go back and tweak it. I can talk with the union because that isn't, you know, what we're supposed to do is discuss it with them. And then I can bring it back at our next meeting. And we're just trying to get it as soon as possible so parents can start planning and knowing what's going on, so.
All right, so everybody, I can only see Jack because you're sharing.
Yeah, I'm going to stop sharing right now. Here you go.
Is anybody else any concerned about tabling that till the next meeting?
I didn't hear what you just said. Sorry.
So there's, for Andy to tweak the days in December, he has to go back to the union because it's sort of a negotiated calendar. And are we okay not voting on the calendar tonight to give him time to do that? And we should be back here in two weeks. Okay. Okay. Next up. We will do director's comments first because we do have an executive session for superintendent evaluation.
Are we going to do the budget approval?
Yes, the budget, I think, yes. The budget.
Okay.
Budget committee.
We did meet at 5:30. And let me just start with, there may be some tweaking you end up needing to do here at this point. But the consensus from the budget committee was to recommend the budget of $5,331,222. Cents. This is down $941,603 from last year's budget. I know Andy just got some, a little other information that may impact those numbers as well.
So just, just literally after the meeting ended, I was in that few minutes checking email. I received an email that, and James McCullough has actually brought it up, and that's how long it's, he brought it up at our last meeting. I've been querying people to try and get it, which is, there is a reimbursement that comes back for transportation. And so what was recommended to me was to build in about $150,000 as a safe number because it's never known. And actually, it hasn't been, like, with the triple E piece, we're told this is the projected number. And that's why I put that number in. I wasn't given a projected number, so I was told you can safely kind of figure this number. And that kind of mimics also where HR, H R, H R, H R Smith was, where they said that transportation, it was about $200,000, hadn't been figured in that short audit report. And so that's why I went with, I didn't want to go with the $200,000, because we're a little under or whatever, you know. So at $150,000, that would put the requested budget at $5,181,222.50 for a difference of $1,091,602.95.
Did we beat that? $1,000,000?
That is a decrease.
That is a decrease of over 15%.
All right, do you want to make a motion for Sola?
Well, yeah, and then I guess that the, you know, in light of hearing Ron, highly recommend that we look at perhaps adding someone with an accounting background. If we were to build that in, that transportation would offset that. So that would, with, without asking, and maybe someone at the board knows what a fair figure is, but we also have to think of benefits also on that salary. So.
I have a question on that. I think until we, you know, we get to business manager with that, those kind of credentials, I don't think we will really know. And I think that's what we should be looking at right now because we do have the number in the business office that was recommended that we can do that. And Ron did say he was comfortable with the staffing that we have and with that business office position. So I'm feeling like, firstly, I would like to just go with the $5,181,222.50. But I don't know how the rest of my committee feels.
So do you want to put it, do you want to put, adopting the budget to a vote? Or do you want to table it until the committee?
No, we need to, because the unified district is meeting tomorrow night and they need us. Let me make it as a motion and then we can discuss it. Okay, I would make a motion that we adopt the budget of $5,181,222.50.
Yeah, you doing this or mine? Discussion. Go ahead, Jack.
Well, I said I was going to do it, so I'm going to do it. We spent a, according to this, we've been putting in several hundred thousand dollars this year. More than a million dollars we're cutting. Those million dollars that probably we should have cut last year and the year before. But we didn't because we didn't know enough, or at least last year. And so the question becomes, what does it cost you to not have a controller? And my answer is about $900,000. So the question I have for my colleagues is whether we want to put in $100,000 for a controller so that we, at least for one year, so that we don't do this again. That $100,000, $105,000 seems to be the going rate for controllers in schools. This being a smaller one, I'm hoping we can do it for a little less, maybe part-time. But it's still, that's a nice round figure. And considering we're saving a million dollars if we don't want to, if we want to risk spending $900,000, we don't need, again, at some future point, that $100,000 seems like an inexpensive guarantee. So I'm going to ask that we increase that number by $100,000 and I move to amend the budget figure by that amount.
Wait till amend it and let's see how the other members feel because I'll adjust my motion if that's the consensus of the committee.
Okay, next up. Anybody at home? Deb Wright? We'll just go all the way around. Deb Wright, do you have any?
Well, I don't agree with Jack and I would not increase the budget at this point based upon my uncertainty and the quicksand of our numbers at this point. So until it's all shaken out, I just don't feel that we need to move it any higher. Thank you.
Okay, Charlie, you can weigh in.
I think, I'm going to go with Jack. I think at this point, given the chaos that we've just witnessed, having a little extra capacity in the business office for a short time is a very good investment. I'm going with Jack.
He can't be part of the discussion. He doesn't need to be on the member's board.
He actually can be because this is a budget that will affect the Westminster assessment. So this is specifically why these guys have the right to vote. So I hope that we do allow them to speak, you pitch in here.
Point of order, he has not been approved member of a board at this point. They have asked for a waiver, but it has not been approved. So he should not be, especially at the SU level. And I respect his opinions very much, but I really think that we need to stick to the rules.
You're saying that both, that Cheryl and Charlie can't vote on their, on what will end up being their assessment. It was a specific part of what Ollie allowed them to do at the State Board of Education. You're saying that that is not your understanding now and that Justin no longer has the ability to allow them to vote.
Charlie is an employee of the district, Jack.
Okay, so it's in that capacity that this is an issue. I got it. That's fine.
I could just chime in.
I suppose so, yes.
I have been very careful to recuse myself on any issue that affects me personally. But this is not such an issue, I don't believe. So I believe I wouldn't need to recuse myself. Were I an accredited member, I would not need to recuse myself. However, I take your point, Priscilla. In the past, the chair has ruled on whether or not to accept my opinion or my vote or not. So I would ask the chair to do that again.
Cheryl, can you clarify? I thought the waiver was just for the ability to vote? Or is it a waiver for him to be actually on the Westminster board? It's the latter? Okay. I'm sorry, Charlie. I was actually, I was giving you latitude that I thought you had and actually don't. So you're actually getting a waiver to be on the board, not just to vote? Okay.
And I totally respect his opinion. I think he's a very valuable, has some very valuable stuff. But we need to stick to the rules or we could, we cannot justify our votes.
Yes. Oh, and I'm the chair, so it comes down to me. So normally, I take a much less conservative approach. But when it comes to our budget, which is the hottest topic we have for the general public and for accountability, at this point, you can sit and watch as a member of the public since you're not actually on the Westminster School Board.
Well, he is. They haven't voted against him. We have, they have not issued a ruling. But I think in this case, Charlie, even though it's budget-related, it is the SU budget and you are an SU employee, and for that reason, I think you ought not to participate.
I'll accept that.
Try not to call on me again. Sue Board, who's up next? Brenda Parkin.
All right, so I really wouldn't want to increase the budget, but I've heard Jack and Deb and I come somewhere in between because I think maybe a part-time person. So I guess that would increase the budget in that respect.
Okay. And David Clark, you're still on the high school board, yes?
I'm not a member of this board and I hold no opinion on the subject.
Are you a member of the high school board still? Okay. Who do we have next? We have Elise, a Union Elementary School district. There is Elise. Right under David, Elise. I didn't see you here before, sorry. She's been here, has she? Can you hear me or do you not have an opinion to share? We can come back to you. Molly, here she comes. Oh, there she is.
Hi. So I'm not able to vote on this board. I'm just listening in. That's.
I think we've typically allowed all, all members of the constituent boards, they're just not voting members of the SU board unless they were put in that place. So I don't see why we can't have your opinion. But if you don't have one, that is okay too. Molly.
I think I'll stick with having no opinion right now. Just thank you for asking.
Believe it or not, I have an opinion. I, I support it. And I hope that the members really, I mean, listen to what we've been through in the last, what, four years? And, you know, RHR Smith has recommended that we do this. And, you know, they've seen everything we've been through. It's a year where, you know, we're, we've done, Andy and his team have done very well to bring us a budget that is, I'd bet if we could get everybody to admit, way better than we thought it was going to be. And if we put it in the budget and we find somebody and it works, that's an ace. And it doesn't mean that we have to spend that amount of money. But I just, you know, I was a 15-year-old kid from a maintenance meeting and I Googled it to see what the going rate is. And when you add in everything that they tell you a person with that kind of degree should get, it's $100,000. So I am a supporter of adding $100,000 to the budget with the idea and direction to Andy, which we can't technically do that. But with the guidance, I'm hoping that you find an accountant.
Cheryl? So I support the higher level. I would be actually happy with the 5.3 million, giving us some additional latitude. Remembering just what Molly said, it doesn't mean you spend it all. I do think it's essential that we have more actual accounting, as Ron said, DNA, that kind of expertise in the business office. And it is correct, the savings that we're looking at. I'm going to wait for the side talk to finish. So I'm a strong supporter of this investment. Also having been involved in these discussions and looking at, as we discussed in the budget committee with Andy, some of the trends we're seeing and the potential additional costs about, associated with children with high needs, again, potentially coming along. I think that we're showing a significant 15% reduction and a very tight budget that has gone through exceptional scrutiny now. I am, and you heard my question to Ron tonight. Based on everything you've seen, are you comfortable with the accuracy of our projected budget? And he said yes. So I think we're not in quicksand here to one of the, you know, to a metaphor Deb might use. I think we're on solid ground and I am, you know, I'll support either the additional 100 or up to the 5.3 million. Going on what Ron was saying, it seems like we needed this person in there to get us on track and keep us on track for the cost. You know, the blow up. Justin, didn't he say though that we need additional?
I think, no, he said we need a business manager and a controller, with an accounting background.
Task is very different than the business manager. A controller is the one that handles things like fixing the chart of accounts, handles things like doing the audit prep, handles things like looking at the strategic stuff that has not been looked at because people are too busy being swamped by day-to-day. Asking a finance director to do that stuff guarantees that they won't do one of the two jobs well. Of course, it's been our problem right along.
You may.
So just to bring a little history. When I first started, we had Edie and then we had Christine Belch. And Christine Belch was that controller. When Christine Belch, just, now I'm in the driver's seat, but, you know, being on the sidelines watching, since Christine Belch left, we haven't had that checks and balance system. I mean, I wrote, say to that. And just while we're having this discussion, if we're looking at a full-time person at around $100,000, we would also need to build it dollars for the benefits, which could roughly come out to another $50,000. So it could offset what that transportation is type of thing. If we went with, and we're able to get someone that was just part-time, then we could probably offset it with the $100,000 in that sense. But, you know, my personal concern is being able to find someone who might be a part-time person. I mean, one of the consultants that we're working with, with CBE, Casey, she, I mean, she's acting as that and it's, you know, but she's a consultant and so it's an hourly rate and it's pretty hot. know, but she's a consultant, and so it's an hourly rate, and it's pretty hot. So I could see it being difficult to find a part-time person. So that's.
Andy, I would, I would, my, my point of putting, throwing in the $100,000 block in is to say that if you can find somebody part-time, yay, let's do that. If you can't find somebody, well, you're going to only be deficit spending $50,000. And like I've been telling you for a while, I'm, I think that this budget is tight to the point where the rubber band, it's going to break, but I'm hoping it doesn't. This just at least gives you a bonus that you're not, you're not either being handicapped because you don't have a controller, or not having any money when you decide in July, oh my God, I really need one, and not having any money at all.
One question on that. My question was, you said that they were saying it was a $200,000 for transportation. So is that the other 50?
No, no.
Or you came out with 150?
They had $200,000. HR, HR, RHR, why don't I, Smith had a $200,000 that hadn't been accounted for in FY '21 in transportation. The email I received said, you know, you can comfortably look at 100 to 200,000. You know, or, you know, like you can pick something there. And so I went with 150 because it was kind of in the middle. I thought $200,000 was a rule, without knowing that, you know, I just wasn't comfortable going to the 200,000. So I said 150,000, potential revenue coming back. There is also, we always will have indirect costs that will come back, so that could cover some of that $50,000, you know, the benefits and offset some of those things. So, I mean, with $100,000, you know, looking for a part-time to full-time controller.
That would take care of it then. So the original budget amount that we came to consensus at for our meeting would be a better figure. I'm seeing yeses on everybody around the table.
I would be much more comfortable with that.
Jack, yes?
I will go with Andy's recommendation then.
Just, and go back with our original? Okay. So let me change my, my motion. The consensus from the Budget Committee was to recommend a budget of $5,331,222.50. After the discussion we just had, that seems like that's an appropriate number to put in for here for our vote.
Could I ask a question?
Sure. Yes. Welcome back.
What did you do? Did you raise the amount?
No, Jigs, we put the same amount in. What we did was we had a discussion on, there's a transportation.
Okay, you don't have to repeat that. You don't have to repeat that. Okay.
Well, they would handle it. So it's the same amount that, that we had from the committee.
Because the reason I wanted to say this is that the, the person that should be making this decision, not, not to have a controller, but how to staff the office, is the new business manager. It's not this board, okay? And, all right, I'm talking now, you blabber. The, the fact is that when, when Edie was there and the controller was there, there were three other people in the office, okay? So having a full-time accountant, controller, which we should have, would, would, would allow the new business manager to look at the staffing that he inherits, he or she inherits. That's the way this should be managed. It shouldn't be managed at the board level. It shouldn't be subject to this conjectures of Jack Breyer. It ought to be based on doing it the right way. So I, I would, I guess the fact that you've left the budget the same, I guess that, that's okay then, as long as you didn't raise it. But, but please, please, don't try to run the, the finance office. Let the finance director run the finance office.
Yeah, we just wanted to be sure that if they decided that there was a need for it, that we hadn't cut the budget so, to eliminate the chance of doing that. So, I mean, if they decided, we'd have to do it anyway, but just so it gives it a chance. Okay. Thank you, Jess.
Yeah. And I, one, I, I agree with Jigs that we put competent people in charge and let them run their departments. On the other hand, we've let two business managers run their departments, and it hasn't gone so well. I would absolutely have the board support that as a matter of policy, we have a business manager and a controller, because surprisingly, public accounting, we're not subject to some of the same things that I've had to deal with in private business before. We don't have a lot of checks and balances that you wouldn't get away with if you were just working for some publicly traded company. We have, I don't like the idea, there's a lot of things a business manager in a school district is allowed to do, you know, honorably without being checked on, until we have to bring in RHR Smith again. So, yes, I don't want to tell them what to do, but I would really like to see a little bit more check and balance with the two people at that administrative level in the office. So that's my opinion. Priscilla has a motion on the table. If we're ready to approve a budget of $5,331,222.50. And if we're ready to vote, we'll do a roll call around. Deb, right. Did we lose Deb?
No. No, I'm, no, I'm still here. But would you come back to me at the end, please? Thank you.
Brian. Okay, voting?
Did you call me?
Jack?
I'm sorry.
Are you voting, SU member?
I am voting SU member on behalf of the Grafton Athens Westminster Unified District, and I would vote in favor of this.
I don't think we heard you, Deb.
I am voting member, as I keep on telling people, from the, from the unified board, and I'd be voting in the affirmative for this budget.
Yeah. Next, Brenda Parkes.
Yes.
And is Jigs a voting member? Jigs is a voting member.
I vote yea.
And Molly.
Yes.
I got everybody else on TV. We'll come back to Deb. You get to vote. Cheryl?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Back to Elise.
No, Elise doesn't.
Elise doesn't, sorry. Priscilla.
Yes.
And now Deb.
Yes, aye.
Well, that is a unanimous ayes. Unless I forgot somebody else. All right, there is our budget to present. What is the percent down from last year? Wow. That's with the.
As a reminder, Jess, is it Jessie? I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Just as a reminder, the budget, the budget was 14, 14-plus million dollars. So the, the 5 million is, is what we have to assign to our towns, but don't lose sight of that 14 million dollars for just the SU. So, anyway.
It's actually good to point out that this is the assignment to the town's part. But that's still a big decrease. All right.
Yes, I think the other thing we want to make clear, and it's extraordinary what Andy and team have done, and I think with a lot of board member help as well, and other staff, which you've shown us the comprehensive budget, you built in all of the grants, so we can see where all those monies are coming from. It is such an improvement. So thank you very much.
We'll do your director's comments first, and then move. Actually, before we do that, date of next meeting will be, our, moving to number 10, out of order. Our originally regularly scheduled meeting was the 26. And I think we should schedule a meeting because of budgets and audits, at the very least. If anybody disagrees, go ahead and speak. Okay, director's comments, starting on TV. Jack?
I would prefer to wait and to make my comment later, as you go around.
Okay, Deb?
My comment is pretty much the same as it was yesterday, excuse me, the Monday meeting, which is that I have heard from several parents who have unvaccinated children, as I understand there are some 30% or so of unvaccinated students in our student body for the school district. And they feel ostracized, treated like lepers, and are not, are not, do not believe that their children are getting the full benefit of schooling, as they have every right to, to education because of the testing processes that have been going on, the way they are being treated. So I said that on Monday. It's still going on. I would like that to be rectified. That's it. Thank you.
Tell Andy that they have to vote on the total SU budget, not just, that way they've approved the grant. It's really influenced too far.
Is that Chris Kivvy?
Brenda Parkes?
Yes. There's been some discussion and concern, continued concern over COVID. And I have some concerns because I'm also concerned about what we are enabling and encouraging in our children. And, and there's been a lot of information, misinformation, disinformation. I know we can throw talking points around, but we've been enabling and building neurotic behavior, and this will become, at worst, a lifestyle. And right now, it is a defining life experience. Neurosis is a mild mental condition or illness, and it's exhibited by anxiety, depression, anger, guilt, fear of real-world events, and, I don't know, poor response to stressors. We're inflicting stress on our families and our children and stressors. And then we're surprised that they're not, they're not doing well academically or emotionally, and we have to have a lot of counseling going on. We are supposed, we are responsible for well-balanced mental and emotional development. And I'm just concerned about, about how this is going on because we're seeing anxiety, apprehension, we're seeing that they can't do their school studies, depression, low self-esteem, negative emotions and reactions, and the interpretation of everyday situations is threatening some of the definitions of that. And to, and to, to Priscilla's comments, every director's comment with respect to one, she encourages us to be kind to each other. Do you know that that's what comes with paranoia? And I just, I'm just concerned about that when we keep having this ongoing discussion, because it looks like COVID is not going away. It's called a virus. We live with a lot of viruses. Right now, the Omicron has actually been downsized to something that can, it's highly contagious, but it happens quickly. I do realize we have people at risk, and those people should be quarantined and taken care of that. But also, in our response to how we deal with it, I just think we need to be balanced in it. And, and I just, just needed to just, I've been sitting on it for a long time, and I just wanted to throw it out there. Because, because, and I don't want to keep going on, but, but this is what happens on paranoia. You get easily offended, you find it difficult to trust others, you can't cope with any type of criticism, you assign harmful meanings to other people's remarks, you're suspicious, you mistrust people or their actions, you're always on the defensive, you're hostile. This does not sound like our life in our world, but this should not be our school environment for our children. Hostile, aggressive, argumentative, and not be able to compromise. So I do, on that note, I feel like that's a little negative, but on a positive note, I very much appreciated the auditor's work and the work of the budget committees and how they've worked together. And that's my comment.
Um, Elise, you're welcome to comment. Now, we'll come back. Molly?
Thank you for the hard work on the budget.
All right. I'm going to go back to Jigs because I, I phoned Jigs.
Oh. It's hard to comment on that, but yeah, we need, we need some good luck going forward in a lot of respects, and not the least of which is financial. But again, let's hope, as I try to leave the, the Rockingham meeting, every, every meeting is, please, parents, get your children vaccinated. I still believe that's what the science dictates, and we need to get people to, to, to be vaccinated. Thank you.
Hello, Jessa?
Elise, yes.
Oh, yeah. Sorry, I always have a delay because as soon as I go back to my computer, my, my mouse is shut off, and I have to turn it back on. Anyway, I just wanted to thank everyone for working through the budget. I know a lot of work went into it. I appreciate it, and I'm glad that we're going to be able to move ahead and get all our budgets done this year on time. And so thank you.
All right. I don't have too much to add, except I would like to thank all the board members and the community for the, even when people disagree, and I'll echo Priscilla always asking us to be kind, and Brenda said the same thing. You know, this is a state where people really do know how to respectfully disagree, and I appreciate that deeply about Vermont or Vermonters. But I agree that we get to help facilitate that as our, in our roles and responsibilities. So thanks, everybody, for continuing to make that effort.
Lynn?
I'm feeling so much more comfortable after hearing our, our, and Priscilla's presentation.
People are cross-talking. I can't hear what was just said by Lynn, I'm sorry, or whoever was speaking.
Do you want to repeat what you said, Lynn?
I was just stating that in my appreciation for H, RHR and, and Andy's hard work giving the finances pulled together, and it seems like we're on the right space now.
All right, Priscilla?
Yes, there was a lot of hard work that everyone has done over the last few weeks, and totally appreciative of Mr. Hoss bringing all of his knowledge and his hard work to help us finally get this budget in order for tonight, so that it's ready for the other individual boards to do this as they go forward. I do look forward, I do hope that the predictions are correct, that in the next couple weeks, that we see the peak of everything and we start trending downward. Viruses have two ways to go. They have, either they get more virulent, and they kill their hosts, more and more of them, and they die out that way. Or they downgrade themselves so that they can survive and they spread more to the community. And this is, seems to be what this virus is doing. So as hopefully everybody starts getting less and less sick from this, the common cold is a coronavirus, and it was more virulent when it started, but it is.
is a coronavirus, and it was more virulent when it started, but it is, we get that frequently. We get flus each year. If we can just get to that, that level where we can start feeling more comfortable with this. I was looking forward to that for this entire year, and that didn't happen. So we have been through that turmoil again this year. The staff, the administration, and the boards have all felt the impact. And I do, I hear Brenda, um, yes. But remembering to be kind, just one of those things that even without the coronavirus and without any other things, I wake up and try to find something kind I can do each day. So I would encourage all of you to continue doing that. Thank you.
I had so many things I'm going to let go. I do want to apologize for getting everybody's name wrong and who actually works here repeatedly tonight. I don't know what my problem is, but the only thing that I had that I keep writing myself a note about is something that my own kid mentioned to me. And then I looked around and I saw it there, that that everybody's saying they're behind. And they're actually wondering, like, I have good grades. What am I behind? Like, is it really bad? And I would think, what, I don't know how to explain to kids, that they're arbitrary benchmarks, but important. But I would really like to see people try to reframe, reframe some of those conversations. So the kids aren't hearing that they're behind so much. They hear that they're recovering. Because some of them are, are starting to take to heart being told they're behind, even in the context of everybody behind. I guess that falls into the being kind, uh, but it's true. So now, I will do Jack in one second. When we do our, this is kind of part of my comment, when we do our executive session motion, it was brought to my attention that we inadvertently mis-voted one last time. Uh, so we'll need a reminder that you're supposed to actually have two motions. One, to declare that the subject's material is worthy of executive session and the reason. And then you have the motion to actually go into executive session. And we have not been doing that very well, so we need to remember to do that. Uh, and now back to Jack.
Thanks. Um, I, I echo, um, I, I echo Jigs's admonition. Please, folks, do, do, do get your kids vaccinated, get yourselves vaccinated. The reduction in hospitalization, uh, if you do, is such that you really want to. Um, the second is, uh, thanks to Brenda about the reminder to be kind and civil to one another. Uh, these, these meetings get passionate, but there've been times when I've been embarrassed to be part of the board. There was a time when the police were actually called in to settle a school board meeting, which was nuts. We had a time when two school board members literally were challenging each other to a fistfight, uh, over, over, uh, over a budget item. Um, I, I'd hate to see us go back to those days and any, and, and I ask everybody to, to try to be civil, uh, whatever else, you know, how, how, how much irritating we may find each other from time to time. The reality is that we're working for the common good and we're also trying to set an example. Uh, and sometimes we don't set a very good one, and I'd like us to try to do that.
Deb, did you raise your hand?
Uh, yes, just one point of order. Um, the budget item to pass the budget was not on the agenda, correct?
Uh, yeah.
Okay, so it, it was not on the agenda, and we did it this evening. Therefore, we need to ratify it at the next meeting. It's required by the state.
We can, well, in action. Yeah, the budget update was on there because we didn't think they would have it ready. So, yes.
But taking action was, should be noted on an agenda. So we should, I mean, it's not, it's a simple, I mean, I don't like doing them, but it's a simple matter of just that we agreed the second time, just like this first time. So to ratify the motion at our next meeting. That's all. Thank you.
That's the real thing. Yeah.
Correct. If our scribe is listening, hopefully that will get put on the agenda to ratify the vote. So now, our next item is the superintendent's evaluation. So I am looking for a motion to declare that an item of executive session for the reasons that we should have written down on a piece of paper. So we can all read it. Okay?
Madam Chair, I move that, when we move, uh, to an executive session to consider the contract of Andy Haas, uh, doing so, uh, in conformance with, uh, being a personnel matter, it is a, uh, it is proper for an executive session.
I'm going to stop you there, Jack, because we need a motion to declare that subject to be appropriate for executive session.
That subject.
Motion to.
Jessa, where did you see that? Because that is the exact motion that's given at the state level. That's to use.
Oh, it's not. They, uh.
Did they change it on us? Like, is that, that was the language I was told to use for these things.
It should, and that is how VTBLC recommends that it is done to appropriately comply with state law in an executive session.
So what would you want me to say, Jessa?
It's on the state website.
It's an exception to the rule for, um, I believe that's under contracts or labor relations and agreements with employees. You have to make them, you have to make two motions. The second one is Title I, Section 313 of the Vermont statutes.
So what, whatever Deb just said, in conformance.
There are two motions. The first one is, I move to find the premature general public knowledge of personnel matters would clearly place the municipality at substantial disadvantage, um, due to contractual agreements. So that's one. The second one says, I move that the board enter executive session to discuss the personnel matter under provisions of Title I, Section 313 of the Vermont statutes.
I second what Deb just said.
Two motions.
That's two motions. So on motion one, that Andy's contract is executive session material. Do I have any nays? Because actually, I can just ask, if it's not unanimous, I don't have to roll call. Any nays? Any yays? Yay.
Deb?
And this motion number two is to enter executive session to discuss the personnel matter of the superintendent's contract. Do I have yays?
Yay.
Yay. That is a unanimous vote. We're going to add to our executive session with action anticipated after. We're out of executive session at 9:17 PM.
So late.
And we have, uh, action from the executive session. Somebody go ahead, please, with the motion.
Hey, Jack, go ahead.
I'll have you do it for once. I, I.
No.
Okay.
All right, fine. Um, oh, God, I forgot the motion. It's been a long night. It's been four, almost four hours. I had a full day of work. So, um, I move that we.
He's doing it.
Okay, good.
I would like to make a motion that we give Andy Haas a three-year contract, and we direct the chair to negotiate the terms of the contract.
Can you amend your motion? So we are hiring him as superintendent.
Absolutely. I want to hire him as superintendent of the WNESU with a three-year contract. And if the chair.
Authorize the chair.
Chair to negotiate the contract.
All right. And we will roll call this one. Deb Wright?
Aye.
Jack?
Yep.
Um, Elise can vote. Molly?
Yes.
Cheryl, you can vote on this.
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
I vote yes. Priscilla?
Yes.
Okay. That is unanimous of the attendees here, and we do have a forum. Thank you very much. Are adjourned at 9:18 PM.